We're going to have to hand out some comment cards to the people in the audience and send them to Ms. April or Mr. Mitch.
Okay. We'll have those comment cards in about five minutes or so.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get started. We got, we're going to cut off the time at five o'clock. Thank you for being here. People in front of us, thank you very much. Mr. Hart?
Thank you for the opportunity for the Town Tourism Committee to present the students from Fort Lewis College. You're a part of the research and findings. For Reservoir Hill amenities project. As most of you are aware, the Town Tourism Committee has had remarkable success over the past three years increasing tourism traffic at Pagosa. In fact, the past year, lodging tax revenues have hit, have set nine all-time monthly records in lodging tax revenues at Pagosa Springs. This has been occurring while our surrounding towns and cities have seen declines in lodging tax revenues. To sustain this kind of growth, we must provide activities for people to do a while here. Our record shows outstanding results in bringing visitors to Pagosa Springs. However, our revenue visits could be much better. Also, once here, we must find ways to extend our tourist visit for an additional day or two. As I've stated in the past, a big part of the reason for our tourism growth is the fact that Town Council has allowed the government members of Town Tourism Committee to implement their ideas and enthusiasm in marketing Pagosa Springs as a tourist destination. After being asked by Town Council to investigate options for Reservoir Hill and over a year and a half of research, the TTC has determined that adding low-impact amenities to our core downtown area will help to continue the success of increasing tourism to Pagosa Springs while having low environmental impact toward beloved Reservoir Hill. The TTC presented a business plan to Town Council, and we have been instructed by Town Council throughout the process to continue our research and bring forth ideas for the operation as well as financing the project. I want to be clear that the suggested amenities for Reservoir Hill are not wild and crazy ideas out of nowhere, but actually very smart business ideas where a town's primary economic driver is tourism. Other communities are finding success in adding such amenities, and to not do so greatly affect the continued success and growth in tourism throughout our area. Pagosa has a tourism-based economy, and until another economic driver is discovered or found, I recommend we do everything we can to keep tourism growing strong. Our goal is to develop a wide range of quality year-round recreational activities which encourage regional economic growth while conserving our environment. It is for the sake of our residents, our businesses, and most of all, our children and grandchildren, urging to examine all the facts and not listen to either side say or untruths when it comes to amenities on Reservoir Hill. I urge you to look at the economic benefits for our community as well as sustainability and job opportunities for the people of Pagosa Springs. With that, Town Council asked us to continue research, and we've done so through Fort Lewis College. And I would like to introduce three recent graduates from Fort Lewis College School of Business. Casey Hart, who's no relation to me. Cash Parker, and Jessica Lo. And these three students are all, before they went to college, all were residents of Pagosa Springs. They have examined the research of Reservoir Hill Plan and will now present to you their findings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
All right, so as announced, I'm Jessica Lo, this is Cash Parker, and Casey Hart. And we are all recent graduates from Fort Lewis College, from the School of Business. And we were lucky enough to be able to work on the project, or the development of the project, to find out some more information for everybody financing, a little bit more information about the amenities. And also stated, we are all originally from Pagosa, so this was really exciting for us to do as a final project. And what we did with our senior seminar project is we combined everything that we've learned at Fort Lewis School of Business and put it together in one final project, which is what we're presenting to you today.
So the primary goal of this proposed project is to install said amenities. And our role in this was to research some financing options as well as give advice on how to run said amenities on installation. Primary goal of this project, as most of you are presumably aware of, is that once the amenities are installed, people will have more to do. But once they're at Pagosa, resulting in an increase in overnight stays and more revenue for the town as well as business owners. What follows is an analysis of the proposed amenities.
All right, so the first amenity we took a look at was the Alpine Coaster, which seems to be one of the bigger amenities that everybody's a little worried about. There are currently 10 Alpine Coasters in the United States, but only three of them are located in our region. They're located in Park City, Utah, Glenwood Springs, Colorado, and Breckenridge, Colorado. We spoke to the company that was in charge of building the Alpine Coasters in our area, and they are different from Alpine Slides. They don't do as much damage environmentally. They're raised above the ground, and soon if you want them removed, they're easily removed, and there's very little damage done to the environment. But we spoke to the company that built them in the area, and they gave us an estimated price of $900 per meter for expected building and installation costs. We spoke to every resort in this country that has an Alpine Coaster to get a basic idea of what it costs them to build and install their. And we have an average price of $1.6 million, the cheapest being $300,000, the most expensive being $2.5 million. We also wanted to know basically how much they're charging per rider. And they're as little as $8, as high as $20, but the average is $12.70 per adult rider, which puts the estimated cost of, or the estimated price of $12 per rider right in the ballpark. We also wanted to know how much, or how long it took them to get a return on their investment. And the average is a range between 10 and 24 months. Some other considerations we wanted to incorporate for the Alpine Coaster that weren't mentioned in the original proposal were rates for children, rates for double riders, so one set price for two people to ride down in the same car, and then possibly an all-day access pass.
So the zip lines are popular as far as way from Pagosa is Costa Rica, it's by Durango. The zip line options in Durango include the soaring treetop adventure, which is accessed via the Durango Silverton Jail Gate. This option is a five-and-a-half-hour tour, which costs a ticket price of $499. The other option, which is called less adventure center, which is located up past the Double Tree towards Mankas. Now for a variety of ticket options, being the first of which is a $149 two-hour tour. They also offer a three-hour, $199 tour, and additionally, they do offer another two-hour tour at night, which is priced at $149. The zip line in Purgatory was admitted from this analysis, simply because it is a plunge as opposed to a canopy tour. Given Pagosa's proposed ticket price for the zip line of $89 and the distance from Pagosa of the Durango options, it would be definitely wise to consider a heightened ticket price.
The next two options we looked at, or two amenities we looked at, were the Observation Tower and the Hot Air Tether Balloon. We kind of looked at these together because they're very similar in their operations. The hot air tether balloon would be a great advertising opportunity for Pagosa Springs. The hot air tether balloon would float anywhere from 40 to 100 feet. This would draw people to Reservoir Hill. If you've got drive-by tourists coming through, they don't really know what Pagosa's about. They might see the balloon and be attracted to that area. It also, even though this might draw from local balloon business, we don't think, since it's a tethered balloon, it will really do all that much, if any. We are, the proposed price is about $12 per rider each trip, and this would give a great price advantage to Pagosa Springs as, from what we saw from tether balloon rides in the U.S., it varied anywhere from $200 to $1,000. So it can be pretty pricey, and this would provide a very inexpensive and fun thing for families to do. The next thing we looked at was the Observation Tower. This would provide a great view of the landscape at, free of charge. So this could potentially cause issues with the hot air tether balloon. It's kind of providing the same view, but at a free price, so the hot air tether balloon might see some reduced use. And...
All right, so the next amenity we looked at is the amphitheater, and from what we hear, it seems to be the one that everybody's most excited about, because we do have music festivals here every year. We have the Folk Festival and the Folk and Bluegrass Festival, and it draws in a large number of people to our town every year. We compared it to the Red Rocks Amphitheater, just because, we know it's a huge difference from the one proposed on Reservoir Hill, but since the one on Reservoir Hill is considered to be a non-revenue generator, we wanted to take a look at other ways that the amphitheater could bring money into the town. And tax revenue, we don't think was considered originally. And Red Rocks in Denver, though it is very popular throughout the country, brings in about $1.85 million in tax revenue every year for Denver, for the city of Denver alone. So as I said, Pagosa currently hosts two music festivals each year, and the range of people who come in is about 1,000 to 5,000 people per festival. With a standard camping pass and three-day access pass to the festivals being $105 for the entire festival. That's a minimum of $105,000 per, for ticket revenue alone per festival, which we feel would, if we could get a couple more festivals coming into the town every year, could cause the tax revenue for the town to increase substantially.
And then the last amenity we looked at was the chairlift. This is kind of the driving factor behind the entire project. It's obviously going to provide transportation from the bottom of the hill to the top of the hill, which will provide access to all these amenities, especially the amphitheater. The town already owns one and is wanting to use it, therefore this project was implemented. It's free transportation for those who wish to use it. This will kind of alleviate some of the transportation problems during festivals. I mean, they're kind of a headache right now, and it kind of might drive away some people, while having the chairlift installed might actually push tourists to actually go partake in these festivals, even if they don't know what they're really about. Also, this will provide a competitive advantage for Pagosa Springs, as most other areas like Glenwood Springs and Breckenridge actually charge for their chairlift to get to their amenities, and it'll be free for people to use. And this, while they're traveling, it will also provide a great view of the landscape. So what this is, is this is kind of, we took the numbers that were originally provided to us. These are just projections, estimated values. Obviously, you have the riders per hour for the Alpine Coaster multiplied by the number of hours in a day, days in a month, and the average ticket price to get that revenue. We thought that we would create an estimated range of values just to kind of show worst-case scenario, just in case we hit another recession or people stop traveling. And then we also, especially on Alpine Coaster, Duluth, Minnesota had one of these, and they met their 10-month projection in less than four months. So we thought that their estimated range actually might be increased by a certain margin. And so we reduced the original amount by 60% and increased the highest amount by 20%. Obviously, even at our lowest revenue range, this provides quite a bit of revenue. And then we also generated a kind of a profit range. And even at our lowest, we're still bringing in a huge chunk of profit from this Alpine Coaster. And this also, these projections don't include advertising and foot traffic that will also increase due to the use of these amenities. We also provided a break-even point. This is the minimum number of riders needed in each month in order to break even, have revenues equal the expenses. Obviously, these are very, very low amounts, so this is a huge revenue generator. And this, we are operating based on Duluth, Minnesota's values. They said that there's a one rider for every 16 seconds. That leads to about 225 per hour. And with our estimated of 100 per rider, that's actually way below capacity, so we could operate at a much higher capacity if it gets busy. We then did the same thing for the zip line. Obviously, the zip line is going to have limited use during the year. We're not going to be able to operate the zip line during winter months. But even with the zip line, you are showing at the worst-case scenario, a, an excess profit. And then we also have a break-even point of four riders per day needed. The air balloon ride, same thing. Now, the air balloon, even at our worst projection, we are losing money on this one. The profit is negative. However, this doesn't include the increased foot traffic and other intangible assets that might be provided by this. What we did here was a break-even point where there was a straight $5,000 deducted for operating costs from each month. But obviously, during July and August, there's going to be more operating hours than in May. And so by switching those around as a percentage of operating hours, you end up with a straight $9, or nine riders per hour per day.
All right, so to conclude the discussion on the amenities, we would like to make the recommendation that all the amenities should be included for the Reservoir Hill project. They all will bring in some form of revenue and profit for the town. All of our research confirmed that for us. And, but we do recommend that the Observation Tower be put in last or after the hot air balloon has had a chance to become well-known, because we don't want it to hinder the money-making revenue for the hot air balloon.
So we reviewed a number of financing options. The most appealing are definitely our base grants, which could be used for the amphitheater. Additionally, the project is hold qualified for a grant underneath the call of Regional Tourism Act. And obviously, this is fantastic. This is a free form of money. However, the caveat of these is that turnaround time between time of application and receipt of actual money can take a while. So it may be necessary for the project to actually be begun, and the subsequent receipt of money be applied towards debt service. Another option that is worth noting is asset-based lending, and this can be done with a number of different large banking institutions throughout the country. However, this is not particularly appealing because it's a rather expensive form of debt, which brings us to your bond options. The first form of bond is revenue bonds. This form of bond, the debt is serviced via revenue generator for the project. It's commonly seen with utility projects, which are both focused on bringing in revenue as well as very predictable, and you know how many people live in a given area and how they're going to use their electricity given the time of year. Conversely, the Reservoir Hill project is neither profit-focused nor nearly as predictable. This brings us to the next bond type, which is general obligation. And here, the debt is serviced via local taxes. And the additional caveat of these first two types is that they're required to be put to a vote, which can slow down your start of the project, simply because you have to wait until either a general election or a national election. Which brings us to our third bond type, which is the certificate of participation. This bond type, the town effectively mortgages a piece of property, in this case presumably their ownership in Reservoir Hill, and this proceeds to pay off that note. So our recommendation here is that go with the certificate of participation, given the... Given the fact that the town Pagosa has the ownership in Reservoir Hill and is not required to wait on the actual vote. One final item of note is that in speaking with Ronald Link, the Durango City Manager, he did mention that these southern youths have shown interest in project facilities on account of their desire to diversify their holdings as well as draw a greater amount of tourists to the Fort Lewis region. And he put rather plainly, it's a conversation worth having to see if they'd be interested in partnering and/or financing the project.
The last thing we looked at was the operating structure that would be applied to the amenities. The first one we looked at is where the town would own the land, and the amenities would be run by a single concessionaire. This is a great idea in the fact that the single concessionaire would be able to run it as if it was their own business, make business strategies that will help to keep the amenities running and increase profit. While the town has major control over that concessionaire, they have all final say in any major decisions. The next one is the town owned with multiple concessionaires, where they'll run single amenities or one or two amenities. This would, this would increase, from a business standpoint, the profit as people would be looking at just a single amenity. They could apply just one strategy to that amenity, increase their profit, and make that amenity profitable. However, this makes the town involvement a little higher. They have to watch over multiple concessionaires, and it could be burdensome on the town. The third option is a town, where the town leases the land and a third party would own this, and run the amenities. This is a great option for business side. However, with Pagosa Springs wanting some control over the land, it would kind of, they wouldn't have last say in all operations or anything like that. And so the owner of the amenities might implement strategies that actually hurt Pagosa while increasing flow to their own amenities. The last two are kind of a financing-type ownership. This would be with local and outside investors. With outside investors, you often get people who are looking out for their own benefit. They won't have the town in mind. While as local investors, it will, you'll have a closer feel to the, to the amenities and to the project itself. But it might hinder the decision-making process in the fact that it will take more time to go over the ideas that are wanting to be implemented. And with that being said, we suggest that it be town-owned with a single concessionaire. This provides the most control and most efficient use of the amenities and the project itself.
All right, just to sum up everything that we've spoken about, we recommend that all the amenities suggested be included, with the exception of the Observation Tower being put off until a later time, so the balloon will have enough time to generate the appropriate attention and revenue. We recommend that the project be town-owned but operated by a single concessionaire. We feel that, most of you would feel more comfortable knowing that you would have a final say in what actually happens to Reservoir Hill before anything actually gets done. And that this project also be funded through the certificate of participation, which, given the town's ownership in Reservoir Hill, as well as the financing option, doesn't need to be voted on locally or nationally, so the project would be expedited. And it will, from what we see, you can't lose.
This is for members of the council. Are there any questions pertaining to the plan?
Could you go back to one of those cards? I haven't seen the break-even numbers before.
Yeah, I just implemented those a couple days ago.
So the coaster is first here? So you only need five riders per hour in July for a evening?
Yep. That's given that it would be staffed by four persons, an hourly rate of $10 an hour.
Oh, okay, yeah, operational cost.
Yeah, and then there's operational cost of $6,000, or $60,000, which we broke up over the 12 months.
So that number doesn't factor in the note if we borrow money?
No, that is, this is purely just the operations of the Alpine Coaster.
Trustee Ali, does he have something?
I just have a quick question. You guys recommend a participation bond. Can you give us some sort of idea of what that, the current rate or what kind of cost we'd be looking at there?
You'd have to consult either investment banker or finance advisor, and we go from there, and they could give you your numbers of what you'd be looking at.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Were you able to get any ridership numbers from recognition, Glenn Lee, Senator?
I, they said it was really, I talked to Duluth, Minnesota, and they said it's really hard to kind of generate that kind of number, because I mean, they don't really look at it that deep. And all they told us was the capacity was at 16 riders, a rider every 16 seconds. And they said they operate at close to 75% capacity.
Because it seems like the economic viability of this, as shown in the plan, hinges on how many riders you get in.
Right.
It's all based on that 100 per hour in July.
Right. But I mean, even, even with, without that, you're still bringing in substantial revenue. I mean, even if you have 40 riders per hour, I mean, that's a pretty low number. I mean, Duluth, Minnesota, they met their 10-month estimate in four months. I mean, so they were way beyond what their rider per hour was thought to be.
And also in some of our research, we actually looked on a bunch of websites to see whether people prefer Alpine Coasters or Alpine Slides. And everybody who's ever been on an Alpine Coaster says that it's one of the best experiences they've ever had. You can run it throughout the year, all year round, and it's minimal damage, and there's never been any incidents where some of these men hurt, so it's very, very safe.
Trustee Cal, do you have anything?
I can't remember the number for that. I will later, I'm sure.
Mr. Holder?
Let me ponder here for a second. What is the population base of Duluth, Minnesota?
I'm not entirely sure. I was not able to look that up. I wasn't able to see that number.
Okay, I think Duluth is quite a metro area, isn't it?
Well, they're also based, they've got Spirit Mountain, which is a ski resort, so they've already got riders up there that might see those amenities. And that's why we're originally, we're taking down to about 60% of the estimated value just because they might not know it's there. Tourists won't know what the coaster is. They won't be able to see it as easily as say Duluth. We thought that 60% was actually a very viable area at the lowest end.
Would you recommend, build out of all the amenities, with the exception of the tower that you mentioned, kind of simultaneously, instead of a step process where you would maybe put in one amenity, see how it went, and then proceed from there?
Do you have an amenity in mind in which you first implement?
The most, the one that would be projected to generate the most revenue.
Okay, I would sell the Alpine Coaster. Yeah, that would actually be a viable option, yes. I would, I would think so. And it was actually, that would also... And it was actually, that would also reduce the impacts of this project substantially.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchum, do you have anything to add?
I'll open it up, if I may comment, pertaining to the plan.
My name is Rick Cool, I'm, I live in the city of Springfield. I have a few questions, actually. First off, were any of these comparisons that you made, were they, were any of those on public, unfenced land?
Not on there.
No? Okay. So they're all, they're all on private land and, and defense?
No, no. That's town-owned, Spirit Mountain's town-owned.
And second, why is the amphitheater considered not a revenue source?
Because you don't have to pay to actually use the amphitheater as opposed to when you charge per person for the amenities. It's going to be there as support for the music festivals, you don't have to charge people to sit at the amphitheater.
On the other hand, you could charge groups to use it.
That's what we're saying, additionally, you're also making tax revenue from the sales of the Kegger Street festivals.
And was liability insurance considered in all of this? Is that part of the five thousand dollars a month?
It's understanding that what the town has, there would be some, something through these relatively nominal conditions to what they have.
So just adding a rider to their existing policy? Let's see. And also, I didn't see a town-owned and operated option in your operations presentation. It was all town-owned with somebody else operating. Is there a reason?
I mean, that's a viable option, we were kind of given the notion that that was not, I mean, they don't want a whole lot of the movement, from what we heard, the town doesn't want too much of movement of this. I mean, they do, they want control of it, but they don't want to actually operate it and spend all that time making sure that it's running smoothly.
So you were reluctant not to consider that?
I mean, we could have looked at it, but we thought that there was other options that would better.
I, I would be interested in knowing what the comparison would be between the others in town and operated, because we are talking about jobs here.
I guess that would be going jobs that's both in private and in public. I guess I already asked the five, I can probably do that. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate all your work that you do to this, and, and you were told that this is, this is public property. Is there anything that you would put in a business plan as far as like going to the voters, because it's owned by the people rather than just being owned by a business? Is there something that changed the way you approached your analysis? Or did you just treat this as if it was a business that was owned?
Well, for the most part, even if you have, you know, some form of operation, you want it to be effectively run regardless of whether it's government-based or public or private, so that's how we look at it in place of just how, you make it more efficient and viable. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I think the question is, if the public in general has shown a distaste for certain portions of this, would you take them out because the public doesn't like them, but, but even though they might generate a profit? That's kind of, how did you approach that?
I'm not sure that's a question we answer, but, in my understanding, your question would be a matter of educating the town Pagosa as to the, the values of the amenities being on the hill.
Well, for example, the, I, as I look at this business plan, in order to run concessions on the hill, you need a pretty good road going up the hill.
Well, as a thing of cheerfulness, it serves us.
Well, I mean, for the, for the, for the operators of concessions. I mean, you're going to be moving food, you're going to be moving equipment and so forth up on the hill to run the concessions, I would assume. You would need truck access, good truck access to the top of the hill.
So you can do a single road system.
So you would need to build a road?
There is a road oriented, so.
Well, do you need a paved road for this kind of an operation with millions of people going out there?
I think you could look at DMR as an example, that, that's concessions on its mountain, transports its people generally through the chairlift, and they don't have to pay for the top of that pay.
They don't have a paid road?
That's fine.
In, in about the, the bonding and so forth, the town councils expressed an interest in seeing this funded without town money. Were you aware of that?
We were just told to look at all the population options, consider everything that's available.
And, and your, your tourism grant that you mentioned, did you understand that that was increment financing? That the grant has to be fully paid in advance by the town and the town only gets reimbursed if there's an increase in tourism? Did you, did you understand that part of it? No? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, we've got two more questions.
The population of Duluth is eighty-five thousand. Do you know the elevation of Reservoir Hill? Compared to the town?
If I understand somewhere around a thousand.
How does your plan differ from the business plan that Task Force did?
We didn't really do it right new, and we looked into the profitability of all the amenities, those options for the town to properly finance the installation, building of these amenities, and the proper way to operate all the amenities. We weren't asked to create a new business plan, we took what they had and we just. I mean, we did question some of their assumptions with the estimated riders on Zip Line, the Hot Air balloon, and the Alpine coaster, we did a very wide range of possible riders for each of the amenities because we were a little drawn up by some of the original numbers, which is why we did the projections.
Sort of put them sixty percent under twenty percent, see how that would affect.
Have you guys walked the hill?
We grew up here. We were raised in this town, so we, we're really familiar with Reservoir Hill. And we're, we're very pro Pagosa and we understand why everybody's a little indie about putting these amenities on there because we don't need a theme park downtown. But at this point, it just seems that we can't afford not to do it, we need the tourism in this town and that's what we thrive off of. And we don't want to see Pagosa kind of go down the wrong path. This is such a great option.
Thank you very much.
I just have one quick question, I can't really read the, the numbers, I don't know. But the, the investment you used for the Alpine coaster, was that the 1.6 million dollars?
They actually projected it at 1.2.
1.2 million? Okay. And that's based on the cost per meter, is that what I heard? And so you took the size of what you had here and that's what it came up to? Was it, okay. Is the, and I don't know, Ariana, if, are our questions to be real, just on the financing?
Pardon?
Pardon to the financing?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, I had some other questions about location and stuff, but I guess I'll, I'll talk about that later. So, so you used 1.2 million for your cost, okay? You said that it was extremely profitable and had a real high return on investment and everything, but yet you also said there's only ten of them in the country. If it is so profitable, why haven't other businesses jumped on this and started putting in?
They're starting to, they're really starting to.
So then if somebody builds one on the hill over here across from us, we might have some competition.
I don't think anybody's willing to be.
Why not? They're extremely profitable.
We only run in town and it's huge.
Well, but, but we only needed one, we only needed one movie rental place in the town way back when too, and we had eight and ten of them, so we only needed one bicycle shop in the town and we had three. So you can't stop people from coming in. If somebody wants to build one and it's highly profitable, then why wouldn't people do it?
A million dollars, I suppose you'll have a bike shop or a fashion issue movement that's worth significantly less than a million dollars.
But there are people out there, a million two is nothing to it, right?
And I don't think you're also taking into consideration the land, the land that would have to be used for, you have to have a very, I guess.
You have to have a large tract of land to implement it.
And that large tract of land we have right now is actually where the hiking trails are, if I'm understanding, and so if we're going to eliminate basically the hiking trails on the west side of town, on the west side of the hill.
The plans that we looked at, the hiking trails are not to be affected at all.
Good. All right, thank you.
I want to see that plan.
I want to see that plan.
I'm getting asked by folks behind the fence, ask if you have a picture of the Alpine coaster.
For your example of what on this?
Yeah.
I don't think we have near that access in there, but there are videos on YouTube of once in Europe, which are pretty awesome.
And, and is the TTC presentation still on the website, the town website? Because I believe there's pictures on there.
Hey, Mr. Moore. Thank you. Can I just talk for dear? No. I just wanted to say a couple things, I guess. No offense to anybody, but it's always back to the data in, data out scenario. I find that these people were not given enough data going in to draw correct conclusions on everything. When I first did the Reservoir Hill proposal, very big to me was the lookout tower. I think they had the impression that people want to go to lookout tower to look down at Pagosa Springs. The entire gist of that was as a tourism draw, they complement a divide, display information, diagrams, aims of the peaks, all sorts of things, had nothing to do with looking down on Pagosa. I searched diligently for a lookout tower that would pertain to us. It's not fair to do a lookout tower at Grand Canyon or anyplace like that. Anybody here with a screen, there are many of them behind us, can go and look at lookout tower, Dorset, Ontario. You will find a very small city with white Pagosa Springs with old population centers a few hundred away. They have a lookout tower and it says on the front page of their website that they get sixty thousand vehicles per year. That's not, that's not people, that's vehicles going in. These things can be extremely popular, tourists, particularly with education function. I don't think it would have anything to do with the balloon going up and down and people looking. The lookout tower was something altogether different than I think what they had considered it to be. I don't even think we need a lookout tower, we just need a deck up there that, because from any place on that point, northeast corner, you could see that entire view. It's just a wonderful opportunity to do some civic responsibility, do some education. These things are popular, universal, people flock to them, parents love them because of the educational aspects with their children. I just think that that part of it in particular has been overlooked. And I could go, you all know I've been involved in this, it's vague, and I could go on and on, but I know for sure it's time. The only thing else I would like to say is, I've got nothing against Alpine coasters and chairlifts and zip lines, but as Phyllis Sweeten said in the last open meeting I was at, they're fine, just not on that hill. You know, that, that hill has got something sacred for Pagosa and I do not want to see an erector set on. And I think from what I glean from newspaper, letters, these meetings that we've had, that basically the people of Pagosa Springs don't want that either. And, you know, the TTC may run their point, you all may vote for it, you may build it, but you're doing something that a significant number of the people in this city and the people in this community don't want to see and will hate for the rest of their lives.
Amen.
Amen.
As Mayor, I also want to thank Mayor Hardaway, congratulations on your graduation. When you were researching this, was any kind of null hypothesis considered? Did you look at conditions under which the cost benefit analysis would indicate not to build? Was there a delta?
Well, that's kind of partially the recent goal of our projections where we went over and over, and then also the break-even point illustrated, just how many you have to have per hour of riders in order to pay for our costs.
So the break-even would be the conditions under which if you didn't think you could get five riders, you're not, you're not.
I couldn't see numbers either, so. What hours of operations would it typically run?
I believe it's only two to three hours a day, just.
In the morning?
Yeah, yeah. In the morning.
Okay. Okay, members of the council, anybody? On behalf of.
On the topic of the break-even, I guess the five riders per hour doesn't seem to be the realistic break-even number for me, if it doesn't factor in the, the fact that we have to borrow the 4.4 million dollars to build all of these things.
This also doesn't include an increased tax revenue that would be generated by the town space. This is just purely on the Alpine coaster, what the operations would be like, what those sales, what those ticket sales would be, so that doesn't factor in all the other types of sales that might be generated by the Alpine coaster.
But you know what I mean, I mean, if it's 1.2 million dollars to build the Alpine coaster, you're going to need more than five riders per hour in July and pay for that. What I looked at in the chart in the business plan, ninety percent of the revenue is generated in the Alpine coaster, right? So, I mean, and where the break-even point seems to be about ten percent over what the projections are, my analysis of it. So a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of profit at the end of the day, that's ten percent of the revenue brought in by the Alpine coaster at a hundred riders per hour in July. I can't see how five riders per hour would be.
Our projections are based off of just what it would cost to run it, we did not include any liabilities against the town, no projections, just operating costs and the possible revenue is our break-even point, that's what we have, so. So yes, you would want to look, what does that service look running also?
Yeah. Can we ask questions of Jenny or Bob or Task Force members, since we're talking about numbers?
I didn't, I, I mean, I feel like we're interrogating these guys into a good job of analyzing, you know, analyzing the business plan that they were given to analyze.
And I just got to be saying about twenty minutes ago, that we're going to ask questions pertaining to the, to the business plan, and that's what we've been doing. So what do you want?
I was just asking if I could ask Jenny or Bob some questions.
Do you have anything to add, instead of you asking, let's just let everybody get involved here. Mr. Hard, do you have anything to add?
I would just like, sorry, Phil, to announce Professor Kusar. She, she was actually their instructor and professor. And three students have already graduated doing this on their own time because we asked them to do it. And, you know, I think if we have questions about their particular work they did, you know, it's fine. But if there's a question for us, I think we can, you know, let them go and we'll have to answer any questions. But I appreciate you guys coming on your own time. And we basically gave them our business plan and asked them to look at it, to deal with it. We didn't talk them anything else about, about it other than come up with your own conclusions. And that's what they did.
Ms. Jenny, do you have anything to add?
I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that anyone has.
Do you have anything to add?
I just want to thank them for their time. I want to thank them for coming to Pagosa Springs. And congratulations on graduating. That, I know is a big relief, so. But thank you, Professor Kusar, for, again, bringing the students together, having them dig into the business plan. And again, I appreciate everyone's time today for taking a few minutes to listen to what they had to say.
On behalf of our community, thank you very much. I want to thank the conclusion for what you did.
I'd like to ask him just one quick question. Taking out what you guys have done in all of that growing up here, which you guys have done the Alpine coaster and all this stuff, if these amenities were available at the time?
Absolutely.
Would you do it today?
Yes.
In where you are now? And do you think the kids of the area need something like this?
Yes.
Yes.
It would add an extra hobby. I mean, it would provide them something to do that would not be burdensome all the time.
Now, you're visiting something to do, definitely. You're giving kids something to do as well. So that'd be a good additional benefit.
We were actually thrilled to hear that this was even being considered. We figured, as soon as we heard the project proposal, we figured this is exactly what the town needs to be, to be brought back to life again. And we, we see what the lack of development in this town has been doing. It's just we can see it coming through, just visiting our families, just those stores closing left and right. And we feel like the town really needs this.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.